I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming. We do not have any visitors wishing to sign in, wishing to speak. We can move, according to special committees, we do not have any special committee meetings, I believe. I just thought I'd mention at this point, I'm sorry.
No, I was.
That Dr. Lane and I both attended the NISBA conference, which ran from Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I sent you all an update on that, I mean, there were some good classes, you know, good seminars that they put on, as always, I'm sure Dr. Lane attended some, I didn't even bump into her at the conference, but I heard she was there from people that we both knew, so. I did attend the voting on Saturday and voted as the board had directed, so I had sent you the results of that, I think they were just sent out by NISBA today, the same results, so. And that's it, if you want to.
Yeah, there were a number of good, relevant presentations, as there always is. It looked like it did slightly differ this year, there was more breakout sessions on Thursday, and in the past, that first date has traditionally focused just on people who are coming there for the law portion training. So this time they had a nice slate of presentations on Thursday, in addition to the Friday and Saturday. Falls correctly, did not fall to each other. But in terms of, instead of highlighting all the presentations I went to, I definitely tended to head in the direction of items that focused more on student achievement, student engagement, presentations that focused on how you do those things for all the children in your district. Not a new thing. But one presentation of interest that actually kind of focused on an ELL or E and L slant, talked about, and again, these are not necessarily new best practices or anything like that, but they focused on the importance of common planning, not that everybody's not aware of that, but in addition to common planning for the content areas and the grade levels, but content, common planning period for the specials and teachers who are focusing on ESL and special education, so that there's more of a robust focus on those particular areas, which I do think is a little bit unique, in particular because it becomes a scheduling nightmare. But they've been able to do a number of good things that way. Another piece was the Teacher of the Year. And I don't know how many of the board members know how rigorous of a process that is. But she had a focus, and this is actually my second opportunity to see her, that really, I would say, kind of focuses more on a master approach, but a master approach in the way of making sure children who have felt kind of disenfranchised or disengaged in the past are just clamoring to come to her classroom. And again, I think we do things like that very well in schools around athletics and around the arts, we don't necessarily do that as well around those academic subject areas. So, you know, we got to make the academics as sexy as the sports on the field. And I think there are ways to do that, we spend, having children who have been actively involved in sports, I think of all the times I had to change vacation and when schools were off cycle, that the sports teams are in session, and we need to do the same thing on the academic end. So, there were just a number of things that kind of resonated slightly different. I do think, which I had mentioned before, because this is probably my fifth NISBA conference that I've attended, that I think it's one of the better opportunities for boards to engage. It's a really good professional development opportunity. I do think we should try, in the future, maybe to get at least half the board that can attend, because just having the opportunity to engage outside of the boardroom in that way is useful. And there are a number of districts through the entire boardrooms. And there's districts who maybe just one member, or even no members come. But I think of all of the opportunities, it's definitely a beneficial type opportunity in terms of all the things that we're responsible for, so.
This was only my second one I've been to, so I haven't been in a number of years, but they had a great app that they sent out to you that helped manage your time there, it was fantastic. You could look up all the different times or what was happening, you can pull off the presentation materials, you can check in to see if other people are there, it was fantastic, so.
And the other thing they did this year and last year, they had student presentations, they had students on panels, which again, we all respond very well, like, are y'all supposed to be doing things? I think that's a new, good highlight that they've done also.
Great. I believe, or I'm in the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like a meaningful couple of days. Superintendent's report, first item we have on here is the update for APPR as it relates to 3012D, the new law that was passed. As you may have heard, originally the state had required districts to get, negotiate a new APPR plan aligned to law, education law 3012D by September 1st of 16. And so we aggressively started doing that last year, working very collaboratively with the union to make sure we met that deadline. And I'm proud that we were able to present a plan to the union membership by the end of the school year and get ratification before everyone left for the summer. We actually hit the ground running and with implementation in the fall. They did however, in the summer, based on some feedback they got from the field, extend the deadline to December 31st. So that naturally leads me to believe that there are some districts that are still at the negotiating table trying to put together a plan, but as you'll hear in a few minutes from Dr. Schonfeld, we hit the ground running this fall with the new plan that was agreed upon and I think almost unanimously ratified by the membership. There may have been a couple of nay votes, but it was overwhelmingly positive, so. Dr. Schonfeld?
Thank you. I want to thank Superintendent Pennella as well, he was working on the APPR stuff when it was most rigorous. The process has been streamlined, but he's worked on a freemire here too. And we did a lot of work with eDoctrino, so we have an information system to help with this. But the initial work on this on the front end is much more than what he's passing off to me right now. So I want to thank them for those efforts. A couple of things that was mentioned, we needed this plan in place by September of 2016, we met that. Already, it was mentioned that the union came together, meaning the teachers' union, this was a collective bargaining type agreement. But basically, the philosophy was to work together, fairness, transparency, and that throughout the process did occur. There's something about Amherst that's different than most districts. The real focus on teaching and learning, I've said it time and time again, in this district, we spent a lot of time, effort, and resources on that, and it was a collaborative agreement that was worked upon. This gives you a little overview of the plan itself. So a plan's in place for right now, and that plan was held off a little bit, so the 3012D, which is that plan in education law, was put into effect, but there was some concern over the state assessments, specifically grades three through eight, math in ELA, attaching that to an evaluation. And some people were concerned and some of the refusals came from this, but also the idea of, are these assessments developmentally appropriate? So they pulled away from, they had a moratorium on any of those assessments that are linked with math in ELA. That's happening for the next three years. So in the next three school years, they will not be using the 3012D plan that we agreed upon. There's transitional plans for the next three years. So I'll go through some of this with you. So although it's a 3012D plan, just picture that, put to the back burner and there's a transitional plan that we'll talk about for right now. But we did agree upon a plan and it's in motion right now. Prior to 3012D, we had a 3012C, that's when the big change on accountability happened within New York State. At that point, there were three subcomponent scores. So you may have heard of this before, that there was 20 points, which was student growth. That was usually a state score. Another 20 points, that was a local score. We had all these student learning objectives, so we had a lot of assessments going on. Not state assessments, but we had to have some sort of assessment that we could evaluate, you know, how teachers were doing. The other 60 points was the observations, so those three components equaled 100. So we were looking at 100 points as a rating scale, and they would get a HEADY score. And that HEADY piece to remind you that's highly effective, if you're effective, developing, or ineffective. So we have a new system now, and I'll break it down in the next slide, but it's really looking at two things, they're not weighted by points per se, like up here how it's out of 100, and you will get an overall score for your matrix. So all of our teachers were presented this in June when they had that ratification vote, we worked closely with the teachers. The simple way to look at this is there's two sides to it. The rows going across, that's student performance. So everyone will be evaluated on some type of student performance, and that again, will have that rating. The teacher or principal observation, because this is for teachers and principals, they'll also get a similar rating on those two things. And if you look across, if you were effective on your observation, you would be somewhere down this column, and across, if you were effective here, they would intersect, and that green box right here would mean your overall score is effective. So you can see the chart, this is what, you know, again, gives some leniency at times. There might be a developing and an effective here, but it still gives you an effective. But any time that you had an ineffective, like in here on student performance, you couldn't be any higher than developing, even if you're highly effective in this row, or column, excuse me. So some of these things, again, you're seeing a lot of colors and things, but basically it breaks down into those two major areas, and they intersect, and that would be your overall score. Basically, what we're looking at, to live in highly effective as a teacher is really hard. That literally you're on, like with swimming, Michael Phelps, every minute of the day. That's really hard to be that type of level consistently. But when we're looking at it in the rating form, you are able to be in highly effective effective most of the time if you're concentrating and doing the things that our Amherst teachers do. So to move a step further, to talk about observation and how it is in either of these plans, so I talked about 3012D and I'm talking now about the transitional scores. Your observation, that would be a full, like formal observation, like we've historically done, ends up being about 90%, exactly 90% of that evaluation for your observation. There's a component that's added through 3012D, which is called an independent evaluator. I like the system that's been worked out in Amherst, that the independent evaluation means that someone outside of your building principal or an administrator in that building will come into your building unannounced for a brief observation. They will look at four cornerstones and we'll talk about that, and that will count for 10% of your assessment for your observation. So, people talked about this, if that was 50%, that doesn't make a lot of sense, because an outsider would be coming in and a principal's rating you that works with you and sees you working every day. So the initial plan was to have 10% and 90%. That administrator that will do the independent, some places will, again, try to use people from other buildings coming over. The decision here was to use district central office. So we have people like Superintendent Pennella, myself, Mr. Bellisle, Mr. DeAngelo, Jessica Hearn also, and Kyle Ild. We would be the component group that would go around and meet with literally our entire staff. That we would go in for 20 minutes, we'll do a write-up on that, and that will count towards 10%. If you're an untenured teacher, there'll be two observations. Any of our untenured teachers, not as a gotcha type thing, but also central office staff will be observing them one out of the two times. So there will be a lead administrator in the building that would be responsible for newer teachers. And then also central office will be doing one of the observations as well. And I know the board is tasked with approving tenure as well. We wanted central office to be part of that decision, so that seems to make a lot of sense. And untenured, or tenured teachers have one observation and then independent. So this whole program, meaning looking at APPR when we started with 3012C, we've had the framework of Silver and Strong that was implemented, this is the fifth year of implementation. So you've heard about the teacher effective framework of Thoughtful Classroom. In these cornerstones, that's what happens all the time in every classroom. When we talk about observations, organization, positive relationships, the culture of thinking and learning, and engagement and enjoyment, those are things we should see on a daily basis all the time. So our independent evaluators, when I'm coming in just blindly into a classroom, that's what I would look for and be able to assess fairly, we would say, and the union agrees. So that's the structure of that. When you're observing on a full-time basis, you're going to be coming in to look at teachers that are doing one of these, they'll define one episode within the teaching of the effective instruction framework. So those are the two things that come together for us to evaluate. The nice thing is, when we switch from the two plans, we still have the Thoughtful Classroom framework, and it makes a lot of sense, it's very pragmatic. The teachers understand it, administrators, we've been trained in it, so we continue to work on that. There's another piece that's rated too for the observation, that's practices of effective professional practice. So how will all this be scored? When we talk about the weighting in the 90% and the 10%, we're not allowed to use .5 or .25, although I like to do that sometimes. When we go in to do that formal observation or the independent, you'll rate each of those, I'll say, episodes. One, two, three, four of those cornerstones, and then one of the dimensions. So we would have an average of each of these, and then you multiply them out by either .9 for the formal observation or .1, and that will give you an overall score. In this right here, you can see 3.68. That would be what your evaluation would be for an observation, meaning you're formal and independent. You would look over on this scale here and you would take this overall score and then apply it on this HEADY chart. So that was the agreed-upon ranges for your observations for your teachers. In this case, that 3.68 would fit in that highly effective area. So if we're thinking of going back to that chart with all the colors, you're going to look at teacher observation, and you would start in the highly effective, and then you'd see how the student outcome was and where that should be. So that's how that lines up. This is the 3012D plan, we currently do this for reporting purposes and just advisory is what they call it. But there's certain levels of teachers' grades four through eight. In the future, we'll have a growth score, you know, in four years if things were to remain the same. Those particular teachers would have 50% of their student score as their growth score for the New York State assessment they're working with. Whereas, they'd have a different grade for the optional 50%. As we move further down, this will change by what assignments you have, because the region's test, grade three, the NISA or NISA SLAP, which is our ELL, these assessments will have individual scores that will relate to that. The last group you'll see too, and this is the majority of our people right now, all other teachers, even though you might teach K2, will be using a building state growth score or a converted score with the growth index. So all of that gets a little simpler here. Right now, we're in the transitional time. For 81% of our teachers, because they're not using a state score and they're not one of these groups, they'll have a district slow that's on five different areas. So we're looking at, you might be a phys ed teacher, they're going to have a transitional score that will include your science four grade, your science eight grade, your US history, your living environment, and your algebra scores. So those five scores and how students succeed on those in the district, looking at it as a whole, would help shake their score. The other teachers, which is about 19% of our teachers, they either have a region score, or they have, again, a special ed test that they give students. The ELL score, a grade eight science score. So those scores are able, we're able to use those as scores. Based on how they do on this chart too, they'll get a range of how successful students were, and then it converts into one of these numbers, which will take you into, again, your HEADY score. And that will be on the chart coming this way on a row. So a lot of it's complex, but we're wrestling it and trying to make it as understandable as possible and, again, trying not to put a lot of time and effort into things that aren't helpful. So if we can use these opportunities to help grow and work together, it's most helpful. The one thing that's been great, because I had mentioned that teachers and principals are both held responsible for APPR and the new plan, the principals agreed to a similar plan that will have, and you'll notice the similarities, although it's different. The four cornerstones, this is also from Silver and Strong, but it's a principal effectiveness framework. We still have your yellow four cornerstones, same exact cornerstones as the teachers, just as we should as administrators be practicing the organization, positive relationships, engagement, excitement, and taking the culture of learning and thinking to the other level. The difference is in that plus area, I call it, those episodes are about a school improvement process. So within all of our schools, if it was named that or not, we're oftentimes looking at how can we improve upon what we are doing. Dr. Lane had shared some different strategies that she picked up on. Those might be things that we'd want to add into a certain school, how would we do that? And this takes you through those. So we would focus our principals in a framework of, again, continually looking at your practice, similar to what we do with teachers. So it's just a little different, that the internal piece for teachers is about teaching, and for administrators, it's about improvement and goal setting. So some of the things, you know, just to cap all of this off, we talked about Silver and Strong, and these are some of the toolbooks that we've implemented strategies at the beginning of the school year. We did some training over the summer, literally with Silver and Smith, Harvey Silver, that has the Thoughtful Classroom. Some of the strategies were rolled out by some of our principals here tonight as well, with the teachers, to talk about questioning, to talk about thinking and learning and why you do certain things. There's also been a lot of summer work occurring. We have worked with consultants, Dr. Shanahan over at UB, so she's a fine example of working with our ELA department. So we want to support these goals, not just say, we want to have an accountability system and try to catch you doing things right or wrong. We want to have a framework that's fair and then support you through that. So the other area is professional development and support, example of the summer. We had an elementary, I'll call it a seminar, that we worked with elementary students, teachers, on the best practices, and we had someone come from Williamsville, Eileen Ryan, and she does a great job with the work she's doing. She shared some of her practices, we did a Google Form survey, and you could see to the far right side, that was the feedback on the time spent. So it was definitely appreciated. We worked with different consultants, and some of our people worked with other people as well. Instructional leadership too, I talked a little bit about the beginning of the school year, but we all met, and I talked at our last meeting about going from school to school, that all the administrators went to each site, met with Harvey Silver. We were introduced to the framework, we went in and looked at lessons going on. We had discussion about what was happening and what you might want to have conversation with a teacher about. So we have that ongoing instructional leadership, as I mentioned. And the last part, different visitations and conferences. I just read an email earlier about an ELL conference in Buffalo that's free, and we might want to consider that. But we went to a Google conference in Russia and Rieta the other day, a team of four of us. We've taken Google and Chromebooks to another level. We went to a district that continues to do that, and we were able to pick up some different ideas and thoughts about how we might be able to, for one, finance, you know, changing Google Chromebooks over, having an infrastructure, and how we can take that learning to another level. So these are some of the ways we're able to support our, again, teachers. This is not adversarial, so far all our conversations have been amicable, and we're looking again to just do our best. And I guess new teacher orientation was really clear, there's no perfect lesson. So I'll even apply that to administrators, there's no perfect, you know, decision that administrators always make too, that we're continuing to look at ourselves, to talk to one another, and to do our very best. So that's a general overview, I know it's a lot to swallow, but we continue just making sure people are aware of what we're discussing and why we're doing this work.
In regards to the teacher observations and the episodes?
Yes.
Since this is being done for multiple years and more than once a year for a number of teachers, how do you make sure that it's not the same episode at the same time you come in?
Well, I think they have.
At least for the planned ones.
Yeah, the planned ones, it's, they have a choice of what they do. We can encourage them to do something different. We haven't logged that, that I'm aware of. But all of those episodes also, to be able to teach those, it does take a level of sophistication, I'll say. We also, I guess, I can share this too, I've alluded to it. We have a team of teachers willing to do an episode and be video recorded for their observation. They'll be paired up with another professional, and they'll watch each other's videos to give feedback about that particular episode. And Superintendent Pennella will have discussion with them about that, and we'll do the same format that we normally do. We'll praise, pose, and propose something that could be done. So that avenue will create a video on each of the episodes. We'll have two videos of each, that's what I alluded to in the past, that we might be able to then use that as a training opportunity. So even though they might do episode five every time, and that's where they anticipatory set, that they're setting the stage for the learning, we would be able to then show them other videos, either through faculty meetings or Staff Development Day, that we could use the video as a jumping off point to have richer conversation about, again. Some of it might be inter-rater reliability, because you would be watching the same exact, you know, lesson at that time. But that would be something that I think would help. Right now, there's flexibility for each professional to choose, but I think, again, knowing the teachers we have here, I think if you suggested try to do a different episode, I don't think they'd be, you know, against doing that either. I think we have a growth mindset here, so that's helpful.
Well, not that it was so rigid that everyone had to be addressed, but I think it would be a little strange if you went three or four years in a row.
Yeah, with the same.
With the same episode.
Yeah, we could look into that, I don't know, you know the history of that?
Yeah, people are becoming more comfortable, I think in the, definitely in the first year, people had a tendency to lean towards episode six, presenting new learning, because that kind of fit within the previous model that most people were familiar with, the essential elements of instruction, the Madeline Hunter-type lesson plan design, you know, that goes from set to closure with, you know, modeling and practice in between. And we, I think, have seen people as they become more comfortable with the framework branch out with that. The beauty of the framework is that it recognizes something that we informally said in the past, which is, teaching unfolds in a sequence, and you're not always going to have every single element of instruction in a 40-minute lesson. So now it's actually formalized here, what you'll see. So now it's actually formalized here, where you'll see Dimension Seven focuses a lot on practice. So if someone's engaged in an extended practice based on the feedback they're getting from the kids, they will hone in on Dimension Seven. So we're now starting to see people more and more comfortable with branching out into those episodes. I think the main restriction is probably the volume. You know, for the principals and the administrators to be able to schedule their workload, you know, they have to give the teachers, you know, a window. You know, here's, here's this group of teachers, and I'm going to schedule your observations during, you know, either a week window or a month window. And because of that limitation, it, you know, in the sequence of what they're doing, it kind of narrows where they can be. So we are seeing a little bit more comfort as people get comfortable with the framework. It does formalize something that we informally said, but a lot of people do focus on the presenting new learning area, because that's the area that's most connected to their previous frame, their previous, you know, knowledge base. That's a good question. But we're working on that. And as Dr. Schoenfeld indicated, we're trying to build a library of lessons for instructional purposes that hit all of the episodes, so people can be exposed to more content. Does anyone else have a question?
I just have one, a really quick one. It's sort of a little bit off topic, but you mentioned that you went to the Google thing, and I'm wondering, were you just there to take in information, or were people asking what Amherst was doing with Google also?
Only informally presenting. Rushenrietta was a district that had gone through a couple phase-in plans. So this is probably the second of a five-year plan. So we met with other practitioners, with students, and with the panel that we listened to. We went to different areas, we even observed in the classroom. Some of it was very similar to what we're doing here, but then there were other conversations, like I said, about finances. Again, how do you manage that, and how do you set priorities? And talk to the board about putting some money towards certain things over time. Not to use a grant, like, that's a simple thing that they shared. Like, if you use a grant to buy Chromebooks, that's great, but what happens in four or five years when there's no grant and you don't have funds allocated? So, again, it wasn't that we, you know, we were in the dark, but we definitely, we weren't presenting. We did reach out to Google, though, subsequently, and the opportunity to be part of things, like Google Expeditions, the virtual reality, where you can take a phone and put it in and go to Egypt, say. We have two kits of thirty that we're implementing. We spoke to them about that and got a better understanding of it. We had some suggestions, which they liked, that's how Google works. They said the practitioners in the field give us feedback, and then we change our product. So we offered Amherst to partner up, and Jake, I think's his name, and Lauren, they offered another opportunity to be part of a partnership in one of the innovative ways to work with some of our teachers rolling out technology, and how they do that in their own setting. So G Suite or Google Suite is a new platform that they're sort of sharing, and they like other districts. So we're going to put that in as a potential thing to consider, because I do see us in a place where we can go to another level, but we're also a level that people I know have come in to view what we do here in Amherst. So it's a good question, and I think we'll be back there in a short amount of time.
Just one, a point of clarification. I'm struck with this student performance criteria. Were you using a district-wide SLO for the majority of the teachers? So let me see if I'm right. So let's say we have a kindergarten teacher who is hired today. That kindergarten teacher would be assessed on student performance for children she had never, she or he had never met, and that were-
Correct.
At least four years ahead?
Yeah, there's, the general way of, there is some guidelines that you're allowed to make decisions about. And one of the common decision that people made was, we're trying to get through the next three years to have a fair evaluation system. So looking at these five areas that happen at the elementary is a fourth grade science. You have an eighth grade science. Those are not part of the restricted assessments that can be used for evaluations. We have the regions assessments. And looking at the data, that was fair data, that we do see a growth and positive trend with those assessments. It's not a gimme that all these teachers will be highly effective because of this, but I think the agreement was, this is fair. In the meantime, there will be other assessments that are added in and can be used, but there was no real choice. And our other choice is to go back to these pre and post-assessments that parents are concerned about kids being anxious and concerned. Having kindergarteners in the first week of school have to do these assessments. So it takes some of the burden off of our students, I think, when a lot of people are concerned about overtesting. This, in our district, takes that sort of out of the mix. A lot of the focus is on that top part, that observation part, which ends up being, not fifty percent, but it is that half of your evaluation in general is from that. So yes, you're accurate in that, and the idea that, again, a special area might be assessing something that's other than. But also, we see our professionals, if it's a phys ed teacher, or a kindergarten, or a regents physics teacher, we're all working with students. Oftentimes, it's literacy-based. Oftentimes, there's mathematics as part of that. So when we talk about educating the whole child and being evaluated on assessments that are further along the road, you know, we view that as, it's not a bad thing. It's actually more inclusive. Because when we start to pigeonhole things, then it's not one team. It's sort of, you're boxing out and doing what's best for you and your accountability. We saw this as a fair way to move forward. So I think that's the best way, but it's a very-
Yeah, it was kind of a funneling effect. I mean, initially, thirty-twelve D restricted the use of local assessments, which was a positive thing in the sense that, you know, it kind of releases our local assessments to the practitioners to be able to use them for what they were intended for. And as a result, what we put together was a plan where most of the people in each of the schools would have a score based on the building-wide state-provided growth score. So that was a growth score at the elementary and middle levels derived from the student's performance on ELA and math state tests. And at the high school, it was based on algebra and ELA. So our thought was, you know, most people should be incorporating literacy practices in the content area. You know, we're all contributing to these standards, and if we expected to integrate them, that was the best route to go. And then we got a curve law where the commissioner, I think appropriately, from the feedback she heard in her first six months on the job, unplugged the assessments from the evaluation system in order to allow the waters to calm around the assessments. And that then prohibited the use of any fourth through eighth ELA and math assessments. So that left us with the opportunity to do transition scores with a limited number of assessments available to us. So the best option that we could see to focus on teaching and learning was to put together a district-wide measure that would apply to a majority of our folks. I mean, the reality of it is, this whole thing is designed to, I believe, from the state level, improve instruction in the classroom. Because the research is pretty clear that the best thing to improve student achievement is to have a high-quality instructor in front of the kids in the classroom. Unfortunately, thirty-twelve C, thirty-twelve D, E, F, G, it's not going to do it. What's going to do it is what we're doing here, which is focusing on a common language of instruction, coaching our teachers, mentoring them with good teacher leaders, providing high-quality professional development, and having administrators who are instructional leaders. And that's the key for the formative development of teachers in the classroom. The evaluation system, you know, quite honestly, is not going to get there until the state, you know, realizes that it's the formative development of teachers through those clinical supervision that is really what's going to make the improvement in student achievement. So we're trying to keep that focused while also complying with the things that we're required to comply with.
And one of the best things of all this is, when you think about unions, you think sometimes unions, you know, are tough and they're worried about themselves. Our unions are working together. So it's the first time, I think, in education that I truly saw different groups, even within an administrative group, two separate groups talking together, and trying to talk about what's happening in Albany. And our unions within districts are having that conversation. And then our professionals are having rich conversation about, again, teaching and learning. And that's the most important part, that I saw more people come together from that standpoint than ever before, which is positive. So it's how you look at it, you know. And I think this has been a positive thing that I've seen from the outside in, and I look forward to moving forward with it.
Quick question about the teacher observations. That ninety percent, ten percent, is that, was that a negotiated item, or is that like a state-dictated thing?
I think you couldn't go beyond-
Eighty.
Eighty percent.
The principal one had to be at least eighty percent?
Or higher.
Or higher. And the independent, I think, had to be at least ten.
At least ten.
So we had very structured choice there. And you, there was a number of things like that under the new law.
But then, did you have to negotiate that then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the flexibility was, I think there was, what, twenty percent?
Yeah.
That we could play with there. Well, thank you very much. Certainly, we appreciate you taking the initiative and getting everything ready and implemented as you start the new school year here. I'll talk a little bit about strategic planning while Dr. Schoenfeld and Mrs. Freimeyer are setting up the technology for the next presentation. So a quick update on our strategic planning process. We met on October twenty-sixth as a planning council, where the committee received and reviewed the last report generated by the Warner Center, the community survey. Each member of the committee had the opportunity during this meeting to pick our top strengths and weaknesses, and this was an individual voting process, presented in all of the research reports based on the guiding questions that were presented by the researchers. At our next meeting, which will be November sixteenth, the primary focus for that meeting will be identifying our areas of focus. And then, we plan to meet for a full day on December eighth, where we will finalize our goals and initiatives that will be aligned to those primary areas of focus. So it's a wonderful committee that is, has been working hard to digest all of the research and data, and we're starting to see it come into focus over the next couple of months. So it's very exciting. I think, Dean, you're there, and I wasn't sure-
I missed, I missed the last-
Missed the last meeting, so how did I do? Is there anything I may have left out? Okay, so that's the strategic planning update. Certainly, there's more to come. I'm very excited to have Mrs. Freimeyer here to present the successful Show Us Your Stripes event from October twenty-second. This, by the way, was the first year that the alternative funding slash Show Us Your Stripes Committee went with a coordinator approach. So Mrs. Freimeyer stepped up and was able to be that coordinator of the event. In the past, it had been multiple people that were very well-intentioned, but didn't have that central coordination. So we were thankful that you were able to coordinate this very successful event, and I'm looking forward to hearing how wonderful the results are.
Thank you. First, I want to thank, obviously, Superintendent Pennella for inviting me to the meeting when the planning meeting actually was occurring. And it just naturally developed, and I was asked to be a cheerperson for it. And I love our school district, so I couldn't think of a better opportunity to get a large group of people together to celebrate our district. Other people that I also need to thank, and that'll come up as well, is Lori Goldcock. Without her, we wouldn't be able to have pulled it off. Honestly, our committee was amazing and phenomenal, but she did a lot of behind-the-scenes work to gather a lot of donations and things like that. So, and obviously, parent support throughout the district. It was the greatest number of people present that we've seen in the past. It's a little gray, so I apologize for that. With the lights, but Melanie Conley, of course, also reaching out to our vendors to solicit donations for our sponsorship levels, and we'll talk about that momentarily. Deb Soddy also was my, I'll say, my left-hand person, because we need two hands to get things done. So I greatly appreciate all of her support and her background knowledge from previous events. I did volunteer for the other events, so I had an idea. But when you stand a little bit closer to it, you see different things that you didn't see before. Sue Frax from our alumni association also supports us in phenomenal ways, and I'll actually skip down. Chris Byrd, who is not listed here, he's not really on our committee, but he did a lot to support us with online ticket sales and keeping track. And we're still working on the numbers as far as what organizations will get what profits and what proceeds from our event. So we won't have that yet, they're still kind of wrapping that up. Obviously, I mentioned Lori Goldcock, Dr. Ilg as well, with communicating things out. Back in August, when they did their sports event kickoff night for parents, he invited me in to be able to speak to all the parents that were there for that athlete meeting, athletics meeting. And I had a table set up in the background, in the back, to begin our ticket sales kickoff. Next year, we look to grow things and make some changes, and I know we will have probably reach out shortly to schedule our planning meeting for next year. Sorry, guys. I'm not going to get up too quickly. And then Mr. Tom Philman, who's a parent in the district, again, he did a lot of kind of behind-the-scenes groundwork of getting things out there in the community, posting signs. Had a day of coming in, grabbing equipment from the building, and getting things set up for us. So, and obviously, soliciting for support through parents and families and other organizations. So we wouldn't be able to do that without our committee. Organizations involved, we actually have been branching out every year to increase involvement with different organizations from within Amherst. Last year was the first year that the middle school, high school, PTSA was involved. And their support of it, they really went in with the Tiger Brewsters to have a fifty-fifty raffle, so that was their first kind of foot in the door. This year, the middle school and high school PTSA, they truly stepped up. They volunteered, they solicited volunteers from parents throughout the district to help with setup, helping during the event and actually clean up as well following. So this year, new, we also had Windermere set up a table and had some apparel sales, which was nice. That was their kind of step in the door. And obviously, we had small with parent representation, as well as they sold tickets for the event. So next year, we look to kind of branch it out and try to make sure that we reach all areas throughout the district to make sure that nobody's kind of left behind. But it was great, a nice collaborative event from all the organizations to show support. Alumni Foundation, we would not have been able to do it without them, as they are kind of the backbone. And we don't really talk about it here, but the funds really kind of funnel through the foundation to offer grants and things like that for our teachers and our classrooms and our students throughout the district, in all areas. Our volunteers, we actually had a large amount of volunteers this year from setup, decorations, baskets. We had a parent that's new to the district that offered to take photographs and share them out with us. I think within a few hours-
They did an amazing job. They were beautiful.
They're beautiful. So I did sneak some of them in here. So I did give her credit for her photos, because she did a great job, and it really captured everybody's kind of engagement and involvement throughout the event. So I greatly appreciated that. And that was kind of a natural thing that kind of happened on its own. I know people were taking images, but they have great photos, represent what was occurring in our buildings, in our event, and to see the collaboration between teachers and parents and alumni, it was phenomenal to kind of sit back and watch. So throughout our setup and decorations, the Smith and Stark family, they're from the middle school and high school PTSA, their children were there to also help support, and also Riley was also there to help out. So it was great to see it wasn't just parents, it was parents, teachers, children of our district to kind of come together and support. So we appreciate it. We actually had, our music teacher, Matt Hendrick, at the high school, had also a student volunteer that ran the sound for us in the background to make sure things were running. He did a great job. I don't even know if anybody would even realize that he was there, but he was there to help us with anything that we needed. So he actually has a little gift coming from our committee as a thank you for his time. Obviously, he didn't ask for anything. It was a volunteer experience for him, but he did a great job. Again, basket and ticket sales, we also had AOPA Step Up to Volunteer, which is our clerical unit. They offered to reach out to their clerical to see if they would solicit for volunteers to help with that event. So that was nice, because we're reaching out to different people and getting different people involved, which is great. And then Brian Davis, teacher, parent, and coach within our district, was our emcee just to kind of keep things going and increase ticket sales. So I greatly appreciate everybody who supported. We did have an increase in ticket sales from last year to this year's event. We were very happy with this because of the timing of it. It occurred right after our fall break, which kind of, we didn't think about it at the time, but it did slow things down a little bit, and then they picked up quickly. time, but it did slow things down a little bit and then they picked up quickly. We had numerous through the door, like onsite that day, ticket sales, which was fantastic. We have more vendors that received tickets, but we had twelve present. So what you see is tickets sold and then vendors present who came through to support our events. Even though they received tickets, they may not have come or they didn't send representation. So, our numbers this year were huge, which we're very happy with. We'd like to see that increase for next year. So, we'll get a date and we can get it on your calendar soon. As far as our revenue, pre-sale tickets, I'll just leave this up for a moment, our revenue was sixteen thousand dollars, estimate. This is based on our ticket sales, obviously, our raffles and our silent auction. This does not include any, like the PTSA, middle school, high school PTSA, they did a wine pull. Their numbers are not in here. They themselves made about thirteen hundred dollars for their wine pull. So that was something that will go towards their funds that will also help any of the scholarships and things like that that they have to offer. I believe Windermere sold, I think that their profit was about two hundred fifty dollars from the apparel that they sold that night. And then I believe the sports boosters, I believe they raised, raised also about a thousand dollars. So that's great that we had different organizations there. I know the Alumni Foundation was selling bracelets, people didn't really see them. So check online for holiday gifts, they're beautiful. So take a look at that, but those numbers are not reflected in here as well.
Does the sponsorship include in-kind gifts? Is that coming through?
No, this is just, these are just cash sponsorships.
Okay.
So any donations, we'll talk about that momentarily as far as, we had about, through, we tracked all of the donations, whether it was baskets or items for raffles, and this is not including the PTSA donations. We had approximately a little over three thousand dollars in goods or services that were donated for our basket raffle from businesses and people throughout the community. But I cannot include that in as revenue since it's not really in our pockets now to, to hand out. Our estimate, our estimated expenditures was approximately three thousand dollars. We did have a printing donation, which was great, so we didn't have to pay for the printing of the tickets and posters and things like that, which was fantastic. The incentives, this year we offered an incentive for teams or organizations to sell the most tickets, as well as building-based incentive for the building, the school building that sold, had the highest population of faculty and staff present. We'll work in on those numbers as well because we had many kind of come through the door, so we're going through tickets tubs to get that finalized. But we did have, we did have a larger number of faculty and staff present than we've ever had before, which was great. It shows the support of our school district and kind of reclaiming Amherst again. So we're very happy to see that. This is tough to see, so our net, net revenue was approximately thirteen thousand dollars. It's nice for a two-hour event.
That's excellent.
It's a lot of work in the background, but it's great. And then we had our sponsors. So we, I just have a little quick presentation. We, of course, received approximately ten thousand dollars from our sponsors. And then, their, with their sponsorship levels, varied as far as what they received from us as a district for their sponsorship. First student was our varsity circle sponsorship. Our junior varsity circle sponsorship was Hot Tin' Nuts Attorneys. And then we go through when we start to add up our honor society sponsors, tiger scholar sponsors, patron sponsors, and then last but not least, our Tiger Club sponsors. It's not really listed in any of our documentation, but this is kind of my new sponsorship level. This was based on any of the donations that we received for our businesses or parents or organizations that contributed to our basket raffle and our silent auctions. And just the silent auction, our basket raffles made approximately eleven hundred dollars. If you didn't get a chance to go there, make sure you plan to go there. It was a great celebration in our community and our school district and businesses and the networking was phenomenal. Teachers that have been there, that have never been there that were there, they were very excited to see past former parents. Some were little Santa see former students that were there as well, so it was a nice event.
I would just like to say thank you to Donna because you did an amazing job with this. She was incredibly organized and passionate and, you know, zealous, you know, coming up with ideas and, and the challenges and the buildings and things like that. I mean, stuff that, you know, we wouldn't have been able to do or accomplish as a committee. You know, having you head it up and really run with it, with all of us being able to provide you support on it, you know, you said multiple times, we couldn't have done it without this person or that person, we couldn't have done it without you. This event never would have happened without you, your leadership and you-
Thank you very much and I know, having worked with you in the curriculum office, that there's only one place you're going with this and it's going to get bigger and better every year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, the last item on the superintendent's report is school board recognition. So, as you very well know, last week was New York State School Board Recognition Week. So I was proud to recognize you through our marquees. There was a letter to the editor and the B. We had a news item on our website and we also had some social media tweets going out. You know, you give countless hours that, you know, we know there's a cost for that. You take it away from your family, your spouses, your children, but you do it with a singular focus, which is what's best for kids and that is really noble and commendable. So thank you. In front of you, there's a little gift of appreciation from me to you. I hope you get good use out of it and you certainly are welcome to open it and thank you very much for all that you do for our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Enjoy.
Yeah. It's nice. We'll know that inside.
That's all we have for the superintendent's report. So thank you.
All right, and on to new business. We will need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion for new business items F1, A through O, 2, A through J, and 3, D.
I would just like to point out before we, we are appointing and welcoming Mark Ramplado, if I pronounced that correctly, I hope, to our team here at Amherst. He's going to be taking over from Mike Tomczak, December fifth. So, welcome aboard.
Thanks very much, everybody. Look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. All right, then all those in favor of new business items F1, A through O, F2, A through J, and F3, D, please say aye.
Aye.
Question carries, seven zero.
I don't believe we have any follow-up answers. I'm trying to keep track.
None.
We will then need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion that we convene to executive session for matters regarding the A, 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 negotiation tax, and employment of a particular candidate.
In a second?
In a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.